I will call the committee of the whole meeting for February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two to order. Is there any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to item three delegations. We have a delegation from Adco and Mocha Consulting, if you'd like to come up. You'll notice there'll be a switch on your microphone if you want to just bring it towards yourself.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable if I take my mask off when I'm speaking or would you prefer I cut it off?
Prefer to keep it on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Till tomorrow.
All right, all. Right near the top.
Do I got it right?
There we go.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for allowing us to come in and chat today. And really what my intent in coming in is to chat a little bit about some of the housing solutions that Atco could potentially deliver and talk a little bit about some of the past deployments of these solutions. But before I get into the real mitigability of it, I'd like to introduce myself and introduce the rest of the folks who came with me. My name is Cole Crook. I'm the vice president of Indigenous Relations with Atco. With me is Charles Dodson. Charles Dodson is manager for business services for Atco Structures. As well, we have Nicole Mine. Nicole is the manager of Indigenous Relations for Atco. There's only a Monty Vickerson. Monty Vickerson is with Mocha Consulting, and he's a fellow that, a former long-term Atco employee, but also works alongside our team in terms of some of our initiatives that we try to undertake with Indigenous communities. One of the things that I've been looking at as a potential solution that Atco could possibly bring is looking at areas where there's a municipality and an Indigenous community in fairly close proximity and trying to identify some infrastructure solutions that could benefit both, both communities. One of these things that has been identified is potentially a housing solution that would recognize segments of the population that there's a requirement for in each community. Is one of the things we were looking at is potentially elders and seniors housing? Or potentially housing for, that's targeting people that are currently unhoused and experiencing challenges in finding housing that would fit their budget or, you know, housing that could accommodate those that have specific needs. Atco has developed a modular solution. It's been deployed in a couple of spots in, in B.C. for B.C. housing that, that targets low-income individuals. As well as we have our housing solutions that targets veterans returning from Afghanistan and such that are finding housing crisis. That's the Homes for Heroes. We've got a development in Calgary as well as one in Edmonton, I believe, Charles. So ultimately, at this stage of the game, this is a fairly early initiative, but we certainly thought we'd like to recognize that Wataspas has experienced some, some issues in, in terms of unhoused people and how having to find a solution. I would like to just kind of present this to the, to the group here. We're ultimately going to be hopefully talking to a number of the Musqueachie's communities as well. Just to gauge interest and to see if there's, there's something here that would be worth talking about further and having some further discussions on and seeing if there is a potential fit. So we do have a bit of a presentation, which I believe was forwarded to the, to the council. It just gives kind of some, some images and speaks at a fairly high level in regards to what, what this concept could look at, look like. Sorry, I don't know if I can call it up on the screen or, or how that would potentially work.
I sent out the Houses for Heroes brochure to council.
Okay.
That Monty forwarded to me when Nicole did so.
Perfect. This is just a bit of an overview of the, of the Homes for Heroes, which is, you know, kind of takes Atco stab at the tiny homes concept. These are individual units that are compact and small. You can see in the, in the corner there, it's a Murphy bed design where there's the bed pulls down, it can be folded up again. And these are one solution that we, we put together for addressing immediate needs. This is, is, is not particularly high density. It has individual housing units that are sort of semi-detached. Charles, do you have any comments you'd like to share on, on this sort of development?
Yeah.
You can move a chair up if you want.
So these units are designed for single occupancy. Obviously, there are some challenges in the veteran community. The, the bed does fall down. So you're, you know, you're targeting a younger audience. Obviously, they can lift and affect to do that. It also has provides a community. There's a, there's a community center, which is then looked, looked after where all the veterans can come and, and socialize, which is pretty important. So it's a very much a community feel, although not high density. It's, it's fairly small and very, you know, pretty compact and gets maximum bang for buck. There's twenty-plus residents in each of those, in each of those communities. And we've set the second one up in Edmonton that came online, I think, two months ago. So it's a proven concept and it's a proven design.
Real expand for the, the next, next image. This next image is sorry, I got into the mic here. Could you roll down just a touch further? I'm sorry. Perfect, that's, that's what I was kind of looking at. This is a, an initiative we'd undertaken for B.C., B.C. housing, an affordable housing complex. This was in Vernon, B.C., correct, Charles? This is something that I believe houses sixty potential residents. It's a, a single sort of a bachelor suite kind of concept, correct, Charles? And, and this is something I think might be a, a good solution if we're potentially going to look at addressing something to elders or those sort of segments of the population. The main floor is kind of a, an open concept where there's room for programming and, and common areas. But really, one of the beauties of this sort of construction, and I won't get too much into details. I'll let Charles speak directly to that is, is the fact that based on this modular concept, it, it can be manufactured remotely whilst the site prep is going on and then constructed on-site, which would allow for some, some time-saving and a fairly rapid deployment. If, if ultimately this was something that would, would prove to be a viable solution for a community. Charles, go ahead if you want to add some more color to that.
Sure. The B.C. Housing Initiative, Affordable Housing Initiative, we, we put in about four different projects across lower mainland B.C. and central B.C. The, the community area at the bottom on the, on the main floor is also serviced by a non-for-profit. There's some detail in there that you may, if you wanted to look at this solution, you may want to discuss with the town of Vernon or how they set that nonprofit up. And they set up the meals for, for the residents as well. Build time is probably ten, about ten, ten to twelve months from order to occupancy. So that varies, depends on the size of the project that you've got. And we found that, you know, having an engineered solution and a proven solution upfront dramatically reduces the amount of time in design, engineering and cost. Engineering alone is about five percent of the original build costs. So you're cutting that out and you have a proven solution that's, that's already been, already been built.
So ultimately, what I was hoping to accomplish today was just to introduce this idea to the, to the council and make ourselves available for any, any immediate questions you may have. Again, this is something that we just kind of thought might be a, a potential fit for a community such as this, where there's close proximity between the respective nations and the municipality and seeing if there's a way that maybe there's a sweet spot where the two groups could work together to, to address the members of both communities that need a, an accommodation solution. Definitely feel with some of the recent announcements from the federal government about some of the, the funding potentially available as well, some of the funding that may be available to Indigenous communities. If, if we were to get our heads together, there may be a, a sweet spot here. And, and really, this is, this is kind of where, where we're at, is thinking that this may be a chance to, to do something that could service both communities and, and meet a need. So definitely, on that note, I won't blather on too much further. I'll, I'll leave it to council here if they have any, any questions or anything they'd like us to, to add.
Thank you, through the chair. Can you give me a bit of an idea, looking at this particular apartment block? The business model that's attached that, so you build it, you fund it, you build it, you rent it? Like, how does the business model unfold?
So for this particular initiative, the business model was B.C. housing procured and use that as the, as a supplier and constructor. The actual business model, B.C. housing procured it. And they, and they, they have their own business model for the nonprofit that works inside the building to maintain the facility and to how, to feed the, the residents. As I'm saying, you may want to reach out to another municipality that's running this to have a look at their business model and get the lessons learned from, from this particular this type of enterprise.
And in terms of a project like this, what kind of initial investments required? Ballpark, I won't, I won't hold you to a decimal point.
No, I appreciate that. This particular solution is in around the fourteen, fifteen million dollar mark.
Thank you.
The, the tiny homes is about two million. About two million. Not two million.
Sorry, Councilor Abrelin.
Thank you, through the chair. When we're looking at the modular homes, are they ready for utilities, right? So you're saying fourteen to fifteen million, let's say we were to go with this apartment block. What is inside? Like, is it, are we then going to have to pay to have all the elect, like, you know what I'm saying? But have the electricity, the plumbing, the, how does that come?
So utilities are normally brought in within three meters of the buildings. The buildings are complete. They obviously need to be complex together onsite. And that just means interconnections, electrical and chemical between the various units, and that's all included in the price. Yeah. So, so we hand over, like, fully commissioned building X many months later.
And then appliances?
Yeah, they're all inside, all, all part of the design.
And furniture?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
If you scroll back a little bit, there was a picture of one of the completed rooms. I'll give everyone an idea as to what the appliances are in that.
And that's in the apartment itself?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the beauty of modular is that it can be completed in a controlled climate in the factory. And then it goes up the road, basically complete, and it just gets unpacked and the furniture rearranged inside the unit once it's complete.
Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just a comment to, to counsel. Monty and I were in contact with each other and just talking about ways that we might be able to do something together with Musqueachie's and, and our unhoused population. And we're also talking about we might be able to incorporate students from, from Musqueachie's High School and Ermitsk and junior, senior high school from the carpentry programs. Pasaga Stale has, has a carpentry program as well at the Healing Lodge. And we thought that this might be something, they also have empty buildings at Sampson, which are appropriate for building. So then Monty set us up with Nicole and Cole, and then we discussed it further. So we're, we're talking about this being a project that would encompass both communities, but also intergenerational so that younger people would be learning skills and, and then they would also be contributing to their communities. So forgetting the dollars right now, it's just, it, it would be a win-win-win. But we're hoping that if council were in favor of at least proceeding with this, that we would be meeting with councils, with the chief and councils at the four bands. Atco would be behind it. And then there are some, some government grants that are available for, for housing, both on and off reserve. And so I got excited and, and here we are today. So, but I'd like to, to thank Cole and, and Charles and, and Nicole and Monty for, for bringing this to us. It's, it's just another way, another picture that we might be able to, to look at. So thank you very much. And Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the council, except, oh.
We don't, we don't move.
Oh.
And any other further questions?
Okay.
I do. So I need to understand where we fit in, the city fits into this project and what the business model is that you're presenting and, and what funding would you, would, would the, would the city of Wataspas need to, to bring this to fruition?
No, no, fair enough, Counselor Billingsley. What, what I was thinking we could do today is certainly present the concept of the, of the product. I think what we need to do, and I think maybe what the next steps are, is if there is an interest in, in further discussions, is, 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 I think, our group needs to, to get our heads around and understand, I'm referring to my group internally and certainly I imagine council will have the mechanism to do this as well, to understand what potential funding models would be available. To understand if, if this is something that does make sense to do as a joint initiative with, with the respective bands. And, and if it is, maybe come together and develop an attack plan. This is a very early discussion and really, perhaps I should have been a little more clear in my explanation. I'm, I'm, at this stage, I don't think we're, we're really doing a sales pitch as of yet. We're just kind of checking out what the, what the thoughts were in terms of proof of concept. If this is something that may be worth having some further discussions and starting to, to sharpen the point of our attack in terms of deciding, okay, we do want to do this. Atco product might be a good fit. There's an appetite to maybe see if there's a synergy with the, with the communities and to go forward and, and see what we can do in terms of, of funding and develop a business model around that. As, as Charles mentioned, this is a roughly a fourteen or fifteen million dollar investment, which, you know, I'm, I'm under no illusions. That's a lot to expect a, a community to, to swallow. However, I think there is a potential model here because I, I do see there is, is in the early stages, there is a, is a potential need. And there is some government funding that potentially, and I'm using that word potential a lot, and forgive me, that is available. And maybe there's something that, that we would, we should explore further. Really, that's kind of where we're at, Counselor.
Thank you. Anything further, Councilman Nielsen?
Through the chair. So because the project is modular in nature, can this be phased? So for example, if I wanted a four-story apartment, can I do two stories and occupy it? And then potentially add a third floor as need arises and potentially a fourth floor as need arises? Or is it a complete build, sold and delivered?
In terms of expandability, that's what modularity gives you, gives you the ability to do that expansion while you're still living in it. I would think in terms of going out rather than up in terms of that expandability. Creating other units on top of occupied floors could be problematic. Adding an extra wing to a design is very, very doable. So you can grow as, as the requirement, as, as the demographics dictate, and you can shrink it as well.
And all these units that you've, you've shown here are, are single occupancy.
Correct.
Is there any provision or plans in the works to expand that beyond single occupancy? I understand with, with tiny homes and veterans and so forth. But in our community, we may have disenfranchised folks, families, couples, elderly couples that, that aren't looking at, at singular occupancy.
Obviously, the design can be adapted fairly rapidly. Obviously, it's single occupancy at the moment. If you reduce the occupancy levels, you, you can have two rooms rather than just one room, and you can make it a family. Or a family or intensive family.
Great, thank you very much.
Anything further? Hearing none, thank you very much for your presentation. I don't know at this point where we can take this, but we can further discuss this with administration and be in contact with them. So thank you very much. Yes. Thank you. No problem. I know. It shouldn't be there. Item three B, we have a delegation from the Hope Mission. Wonderful. If you want to, please come up to the microphone. If you could state your name and we can get going.
So Bruce Reed, I'm the director for Hope Mission. Been the director for more than thirty years, and we're already involved in the Wataspas community with the Bethany Homes. If you've heard of Bethany Homes, eight miles east of Wataspas. And so we've had that since 2010, so we're already involved in the community. So just wanted to present kind of the background. We've got some slides and then talk about a possible proposal for you to consider. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Just sure. So I thought I'd just start with a little PowerPoint presentation so we get a background on Hope Mission and then talk about possible proposal for you guys to consider. So Hope Mission's been around since nineteen twenty-nine, founded in, in Edmonton. And you can see on the, on the slide here, this is the Hope Mission building. It was built in two thousand and four. That's where we have our kitchen dining room. We do about fifty-five thousand meals a month. And then also, it's where our women's shelter is located. If you want to just continue. So we have ambulances that we get from Alberta Health Services. And the, it's called crisis diversion. It goes twenty-four seven. Our emergency shelters are twenty-four seven, so we can pick people off anywhere in the city, twenty-four seven. We take them back to the mission. We work closely with EMS and with the police in regards to take some of the pressure off them and, and take the hardcore intoxicated men off the streets and get them back to the mission or if they need to go to the hospital. Now, this here is the old Herb Jameson Center. And so we've been running emergency shelters for the last thirty years, going back to nineteen ninety-two. This Herb Jameson was built in nineteen fifty-four. It was an old building. We outgrew it. They had capacity for two forty-nine. And we sailed on past that about two thousand and, and four. And so in twenty twenty of Mar- March, we basically demolished the building and put up a new, brand-new Jameson Center, which was a real challenge because as soon as we demolished it, then COVID hit. And, and then we had to deal with all the challenges there. But as of October of this year, or sorry, October first of twenty twenty-one, we were on budget, on time and opened up the new center. So just pass to the next one if you can. Actually, you can just see at the Jameson Center, it was overwhelming. We had to put in trailers in the parking lot. And like I say, it wasn't handicap accessibility, and it was just an old building. So we, like I say, we just demolished it. So if you can show us the next. So this is the new Herb Jameson Center. Rooftop garden. And it has four individual shelters in it. So you've got the low mobility coming out of the hospital, like Royal Alec Hospital, they have nowhere to go. And so we have a medical nursing station that works closely with the fellows that are in wheelchairs and, and struggling regards to their mental capacities. And then we have an intoxicated shelter. And then the two floors upstairs are housing-focused and then also just for transient. So we have capacity for four hundred. And this last Christmas, with the cold spell, we are close to five hundred in this new shelter. And then total of all our shelters together, we had almost eight hundred. So we, we know how to deal with emergency shelter and for the homelessness in Edmonton. That's what we've been doing for the last thirty years. Just keep going here. This is just different pictures of the Jameson. We're really proud of it, how well it went together. It's got an underground parquet for the staff. They had nowhere to park and also their cars were being vandalized. So we put in underground parquet for fifty-three. If you want to just keep going here, just to give you some background on Hope Mission, we built the Green Manor. And so the focus, the heart of, of the mission has been recovery. And so in twenty twelve, we built a six-story, fifty-two-suite apartment for those coming out of our recovery program. And we're very proud of this. It's also got underground parking. We had to put underground parking because the community pushed back, but I'm glad I did have that. It's, it really fits in well. And then we have a meeting area on the sixth floor, social area. And like, this would be, like I say, for people that are working on recovery. And so it's a beautiful building, even ten years later. It's not rundown, it's a concrete building. And it's just near Hundred and Seventh and Hundred and Seventh Street, if you know Edmonton. And then Edwards in place, that's for women. It's so women in recovery, we have a program called Wellspring. And so the graduates would move into this apartment. So they pay rent and we support them under the wing of the mission. And then when, if they move into jobs and start making some good money, then, then they move out and we have other spots for them, but it's usually up to three years. Immigration Hall, we received that in two thousand and eight. And so this is a building built in nineteen twenties. So we've got it the inside and it now has apartments for forty-four. And again, that's all related to our recovery program. And then right by the mission, this is just property. It was, went up for judicial sale. So we bought it for two point nine million and we're planning to do some apartments in, in right next to the mission here. So the idea is to have up to a hundred and twenty apartments. That's the vision. And just for this background of the mission, we have a extensive preventative programs that go right across Alberta. And so we have Kids in Action Programs in schools. We're involved in schools here in Wataspas. I'll just show maybe the next one. So we have a food truck. It does, it goes all over the province into the schools, doing special events, festivals. And it's really connected well with the kids. And then next one would be Tagler. We built that in two thousand and two, and it's an indoor skate park, youth center. Before the pandemic, we were running about eight hundred and eighty different kids. Actually, the, the new soccer superstar, what was Alfonso Davies, went to this youth center back when he was a kid. And then this is located in East Edmonton, about Hundred and Eighteenth Avenue and Thirty-Eighth Street. And then two thousand and two, we received Brightwood Ranch, two hundred and twenty acres. We, forty horses. And so we have about a thousand kids come here in the summertime, obviously pre-COVID. And then on the off-season, we have our recovery. And then on the off-season, we have our recovery program. And then the women come out here and are part of the program. But we built it like a western town, so we demolished everything and then built a western town, it took fifteen years to do it, five million dollars. And it's a beautiful site. Of course, Bethany Holmes, that's here in Wataasquen, we built the greenhouse garden. And so that provides lots of produce for families that are struggling. And also we take the produce into Edmonton for fresh veggies for all our our meals that we do out of Edmonton Ministry. And also at Bethany, just maybe just hold on Bethany for a sec, we built a riding arena, two hundred by one hundred. And we have Horses of Hope program. We have a gal that comes up from South Texas and she leads the horse program, spring, fall, summer, and that's right across from Camrose, all the way through Wataasquen. And we also have our lunch programs, last year, twenty twenty-one, we did sixty thousand meals in the Wataasquen area. And that can be frozen lasagnas, family size for families to campers, to the daily lunch programs in the schools, so we are involved in Wataasquen quite heavily. Twenty fifteen, we got involved in Red Deer and again with North Red Deer in the schools in that area and families. And then also in Calgary, we have the Calgary Hub, it's kind of, if you know Calgary, South Central. And then also have Camp Hope, which is by Brad Creek, so we have two camps. So we have quite a preventative ministry right across the province, actually. I don't know if you can just show the Calgary hub there. The one on the right is just by Brad Creek. Hundred and forty acres, beautiful center, and so we're just developing that, we're putting in a dining room kitchen in there. And then the hub is on the left, it's fifteen thousand square feet in Forest Lawn, if you know Forest Lawn in Calgary. So that kind of just gives you a background and just wanted to share with you a proposal in regards to Wataasquen for your consideration in that we know that there's a challenge with homeless problem with Wataasquen. And so our proposal would be if the city of Wataasquen gave us the two acres by Walmart down in the south and we would build a permanent facility to deal with the homelessness, but also with the families and connections that we have, we'd be willing to put in two and a half million and get it matched by the province. And obviously I don't have drawings or anything right now, but I just wanted to present for consideration, but we could come back with drawings. The idea would be that you'd have your main area, it it would be like a state-of-the-art kitchen and possibly gym-like facility where you could have a homeless shelter winter time. And then second floor is transitional, where you have a room and share facilities. And then third floor could be where you have your studio apartments, so it's kind of a continuum of care. If you had the two acres, you could then put phase two could be more family housing on that property, if you know, if that was a direction. So I just thought, and if there's any questions.
Questions from, questions from council? Counselor Nielsen.
So so the proposal, as you're suggesting this month, thank you for the presentation, by the way. The proposal that you're throwing out is is two acres by Walmart to build a permanent facility to house, how many did you say?
Well, I think two dozen, say twenty-four.
And oh, sorry. So when you, when you talk about twenty-four, because you've talked about a gym that could could be accommodate a shelter in cold weather.
Yeah.
You talked about transitional housing on the second floor and then studio apartments on the third floor. So when you talk about twenty-four people being serviced, that would that would incorporate all three levels of the floor?
Yeah, like I see the main floors, basically, you know, you're reaching out to the community, to the families and and you know, we can have dinners there, we can connect with people. But also with the homeless in regards to if if there's need for overnight shelter, talking to them about housing transitional, and then you have the apartments, like I say, a phase two could be if you wanted to get into family, like larger apartments.
Okay, and in a facility like this, what what kind of personnel staffing would you require to oversee this kind of complex?
You'd have to have twenty-four seven, that's what we have in Edmonton.
Oh, sorry, I no, I understand twenty-four seven, are you talking about ten permanent employees, you're talking about forty when you talk about doctors? Support personnel programming?
Yeah, well, I guess I'm just basing on what we do in Edmonton.
Okay, yeah.
Like I have two hundred and eighty-six employees full-time for Hope Mission and another hundred that are part-time and, you know, casual. But I would think that you'd want to have three staff on at any particular time. And then, like I say, the twenty-four seven, I would really focus on being a housing-focused shelter, really working with the people and getting them housed, that would be the challenge. But, sorry.
No, so there's the housing piece of it.
Yes.
But I'm assuming, and again, with what limited knowledge I have of Hope Mission, but I'm assuming as you're dealing with your clients, your patrons, the the goal is to assist them in dealing with the issues that they're confronted with, which which to me talks about programming and medical interventions and things of that nature, so how does that unfold in in a building like this?
Well, I can see referring a lot to our recovery program in Edmonton, also, you know, we have a medical clinic in in Edmonton, so I can see it working really closely with that, because we get a lot of people from Wataasquen area anyways that are shelters. But I would, if we built this, it would be a concrete block, it's would be stainless steel washrooms. Like we know what it's like and and that's how we built the Jameson Center. The air intake is four times any other building, you want to have fresh air, like you really want to be able to build it like so it can last.
You also indicated that Hope Mission would be prepared to put two point five million into the project and to be matched by other grants, provincial municipal, federal, whatever, who who chases that money?
Well, as an example, the Jameson Center cost sixteen million dollars. I raised eight million from forty-six hundred different individuals and Jason Kenny matched with eight million. There's two charities in all of Alberta that got money from Jason Kenny for capital projects and we were wonderful. And so we would approach the the different levels of government, especially the federal government in regards to matching this.
Right.
Like, we're not just coming in here and say, give us two acres of land and give us all the money, we're putting in two and a half million.
And and what's what's been your relationship with with the federal element related to, for example, indigenous homelessness?
What do you mean, like a relationship, actually, in regards to the Jameson, four million came from the federal government?
That's that's the question. Thank you.
Anything further? Good. Counselor Blatt.
Thank you for the presentation, kind of following along the last lines of Counselor Nielsen's question. In any of your facilities, do you have a reconciliation component? In any of your facilities that you currently have, do you have a reconciliation component to your homelessness programming?
You're talking about like within regards to the First Nations?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have that, but we do have our our point person for First Nations is a fellow that's been with me a long time, who's Inuit and who grew up in residential schools, and he's the point person for you know, working with the First Nation people in regards to what resources are there and how we can support them. So but we don't have an actual committee.
Okay. In regards to that, a good majority of our homeless population currently in Wataasquen are First Nations. And I was wondering if there would be potential of you considering having a committee dedicated to reconciliation within a facility such as yours?
Well, for sure, and I think a good relationship with Maspa Cheese and Redstone.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your presentation, Bruce. I was wondering, would would this lead to jobs in our community from from residents that are in your facility? Like you have people in Edmonton, they go to work and then they come back to your facility. Would this happen here too, is that what your vision might be?
Yeah, like right now, we have six employees and they all live in Wataasquen. But for us, twenty-five, right, twenty-five staff right now have been addicts, homeless on the street, came through our recovery program, now work for us, and so definitely we want to reach out. Like give people an opportunity where, you know, no one else gives them opportunity to work, we want them to come and work for us, so for sure.
But would you be looking for jobs within our community as well for for the residents who who are in the recovery program?
Yes.
That's something you'd search out.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and just to follow up on Counselor Nielsen's question, you would have psychologists and addiction counselors and those on-site in Wataasquen?
We'd like to, yeah, yeah, that's what we have in Edmonton.
Right, but you were saying you you were talking about referring to Edmonton, but you would have to have some on-site here too, I would think.
Right, that live actually in Wataasquen, for sure.
Okay, yeah. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor Longsdale.
Through the chair, thank you, thank you for the presentation. Now, if this was to go ahead in Wataasquen, would it also incorporate the van for picking people up and taking them back to the shelter or?
You know what, I I have not thought of that, but our vans, like we have two vans that are going twenty-four seven all over Edmonton. So you know, we could look at that for sure, I'd love to do that.
I think that would be something very beneficial for a community.
Because you know, if someone's interested in recovery, like we don't care if it's Sunday morning, six-thirty in the morning, you know, if they want to become part of the breakout program, we have thirty to forty men that are in recovery at any time, about fifteen to twenty women. And so for sure, I can see us doing that.
Perfect, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you, through the chair. So we've 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 talked a little bit about the upfront dollars to construct a facility. Who? Who funds your operational costs? Where where do your operational dollars come from to?
We have, we have been around since nineteen twenty-nine, so ninety-three years. Get wonderful community support right across Alberta. And so I like that because I guess it's more of an independence than if you just get government contracts. Because then the government contract goes year by year and and they could cut you off, Denise or whatever, not just being honest, like.
Oh, no, we don't know anything about that.
No, but really, like, but we have up to fifty thousand families, individuals that support us from the foundations. So we I like to get it for every dollar from the government, I like to get a dollar from the community. And so.
So let's extrapolate, extrapolate, so you you've got a funding source.
Yes.
So as as you branch into a task, when you build your facility, now we have operational costs, so are we part of the Hope Mission bank account to fund operational costs in Wataasquen, or do we need to form our own chapter to support our own operation?
Well, already I have a lot of support in Wataasquen, because we've been here for now twelve years. But anywhere, like if if they can get some operational dollars to backstop it and we just keep our own money to add to that, whatever. But even if we get no government money, we will do it.
I guess what I was leading up to is if if operational costs, pick a number, a million dollars a year. And our community decides to get behind Hope Mission in Wataasquen, we fundraise five hundred thousand dollars. You've got a five hundred thousand dollar shortfall. Where does that come from?
Well, from our community support, or if I can get some money from my grandmother, I've been doing that for thirty years.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there's a, there's a pool of money that in the province, so that if there was a shortfall in Wataasquen, excuse me, then that would be made up from the the pot of money you have.
Yeah, I like how you say it's a pot of money.
Okay.
But yes, our independence is because we have so many little people that support us all across the province. And so if I commit to this, then I will make sure that we're covering the operational costs. If I can get help from the government, then that's great, we'll do it.
You you get a fair amount of money from the city of Edmonton, do you not?
Zero.
I oh, I thought that they funded the whole.
That Jameson Center, they gave me no help whatsoever. But I got the support from the federal and the provincial and from the community, forty-six hundred different people who gave ten dollars all the way to a million dollars.
Wow. Do you, you you were here for the Adco presentation, do you see any way of partnering with Adco to to do something like this project, or are you totally independent?
I guess I'm just throwing it out, like, you know, like, I mean, if if I'm turned down and you go a different way, we're still being with Tascos, because we we do almost every school, you know, with our last program, the after-school programs, the horses, the whole program. I would love to talk to Adco, for sure.
Okay, thank you very much.
I don't even have drawings to show you, I'm just throwing it out.
No, I like the concept, so thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Bear Gannam.
Thank you, thanks for the presentation, Bruce. Had the opportunity to meet with Bruce a couple of times over the last year. He was kind enough to tour me around the Herb Jameson Center last summer. Abdi and I got the tour before they were opened up. And it's a lot of that came from RMP Mike Lake, who introduced me to Bruce and who has also introduced me to a number of federal ministers within urban indigenous ministries. So in terms of funding that could potentially be coming to the community, further funding, because we've already had some federal funding come, would also come from those indigenous, urban indigenous ministries through the federal government. So I think it's a really good opportunity or something that we could explore in terms of minimal city involvement. Donating some land and then having a an agency that's been around for almost a hundred years, operating a shelter within Wataasquen. Phasing it in to have the ability of transitional housing and affordable housing as well. I think the backstop of what Hope Mission offers in the province already is something that we could certainly use here in Wataasquen. And I I'm not sure if they were dancing around the question a little bit before, but I think what they were alluding to is if there's a shortfall, are you coming back to the city of Wataasquen and saying, we need a million dollars?
I wasn't planning to, but if you wanted to.
I'm not offering it as a a suggestion, I think that that's what our counselor was getting to is is that if there is a shortfall, are you coming back to the city of Wataasquen? And I think in terms of you not receiving any money from the city of Edmonton, shows that you're not reliant on the municipality that you're operating in. It's you making something work for the community and then having some support, even if it's just moral support by the the community and the council.
No, we want to have a good relationship with the council and with the city of Edmonton and whatever, but in my thirty years, I've never received anything from the city of Edmonton, so. But I I'm really thankful that we have our independence and we have so many, it's all the little people, you know, they give a little and it all adds up and, you know. We have sixty million in assets across the province and we have no debt and and but that's taken me twenty-five years to get to that point. So would love to be involved, but if we're not, we're we're still here, so.
Appreciate it, thanks very much.
Thanks.
Any? Yep. Counselor Nielsen.
So what are next steps? So let's let's assume for a minute that, yeah, we we we'd like to investigate this further, what, from your perspective, what are next steps?
Well, I think I was talking to Tyler, that we had my own construction team, we worked together for the last twenty-five years to get some concepts, to talk to somebody with us, would just say, here, this is kind of our idea, you know, with the housing and this. Just as a, to kick things off, and see if we're on the right track, but we're willing to step up if you want us to, if you don't, that's fine too.
And the reason I ask the question is because, and and I think Bill asked the question as well, of of particular interest is certainly the facility. But perhaps even bigger than that is is the supports, it's it's one thing to have a facility, which we found out, we've now have people. How do we put the best programs in place to move as many people as we can into recovery programs, into transitional housing? And so there's a whole programming piece that that for me, before I buy into a concept of a big building, I also need to buy into the concept of what does programming look like? Or are we simply going to be, and and I don't mean to be disrespectful, or are we just going to be a housing project, you know what I mean? Because the programming piece we have seen over the last couple of years is critical to the success of having a facility. So you can show me all the blueprints you want. And I would be excited to see those. But I'm also. But I'm also. It's critical to me that I see the programming, the staffing, what kinds of things you envision in our community to support. The people that would be accessing that center.
Yeah. And I guess what I'm trying to really push in Edmonton is there's this, and I could send you the, the article, but to start with safety. And zero tolerance for encampments. It's called compassionate enforcement. And getting, that's a number one thing. And I'm, I'm working on that in Edmonton, but also. We have established recovery programs. That's the heart of the mission. And you talked about the ambulance, you know, like if. Picking people from here and getting them into our recovery programs to have a, a staff here also, like outreach worker, working with them. Having the support of a psychologist and what do we build that up is what we do.
Thank you.
We just don't want to have a building and then it's still a problem.
Yeah, for sure.
Is what you're saying.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah.
Counselor Elliott.
Thank you. We all guys keep asking questions here. Just want, if, if the land were granted to you. What kind of a timeline would, would you see or is that based on your fundraising?
Yeah, I like, we're ready to put in two and a half million, but it has to be the, the federal government and everybody has to come alongside us. I just see a project of around five million dollars and they give two and a half million to match us and we're ready to go. I have my team. You know, to like contractor engineer, builder, lawyers, whatever to do it. We've been doing it for the last twenty-five years.
So shovels in the ground, how soon?
I guess, like I say, I gotta make sure that I have that other two and a half million. You know, like Mike Lake and whatever, that they come along and say, we can get you your other matching two and a half million. I couldn't go to the Jamison Center until I knew Jason Kenny was going to match me eight million.
Yes.
He came to our banquet before he was in premier and he said, okay, if I get elected, you, you've got your eight million. Then he got elected and he, he followed it right through, right onto the budget. So that's what I think. We're ready to go.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Bruce, I do have a.
Sure.
Couple of questions. First of all, thank you very much and I appreciate all the work that you do in the province. So the ask for the city, I just want to be perfectly clear, it would be looking for two acres. Past that, are you looking for any administration time as far as or administration involvement? Or council's involvement in any of the day-to-day or building up to the project completion?
Well, I, I guess I just want your support. I'm not gonna do this unless, like, if you don't want us to do that.
No.
But you get behind us so that when I'm talking to the federal government or the province that, yes, we're really behind this, so I can get the funds. But I'm not, I'm not looking to.
No, I.
Be a problem child or high maintenance person here.
It, it, it doesn't seem like that, that you are. The question that was asked from Counselor Elliott had to do with timeline and, and I kind of have a little bit of a concern with that as well is because. What we've been struggling with in this community is a winter warming shelter. And. Every year, winter comes. And my personal concern is, what do we do if shovels don't get put into the ground till? July of this year. That would probably be. But having said that, then the doors certainly wouldn't be open by November or December, the first of this year. So that still puts us in a situation of. Needing some form of a winter warming shelter.
Right, and, and you're, you're right. I couldn't possibly build this by next winter.
Sure.
I mean, you've got permitting and just, I just want to make sure that the two and a half is behind you.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further? So thank you very much for your presentation. Next steps for us would be to discuss with administration and bring something forward. And then from there, if council deems that this is something that we're interested in, we will certainly be in contact.
Thanks, thanks.
We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item four A. Development permit statistics. And, oh, there he is. Hello, Andrew.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Council. Yes, permit stats. I know that we have not presented these very regularly lately. And so we wanted to bring them for you now and, and expecting that we'll be reporting them more regularly going forward. So I do have the, of course, the most exciting part is the graphs attached. And I'll just go through some quick highlights from this month. So we'll start just by the month, so January of this year. I'll just compare, we, we compared to a year ago and also to last month. So yeah, January of this year, the department approved two development permits, four building permits and eight sign permits. Just a little narrative here. It's a decrease from last year at the same time. It's an increase from last month, however, and construction values from the month of January were also lower than the same time last year. So I'm happy to chat more about that if you would like, but I think that the snapshot of the single month. Is not always the most representative of what is really happening. And so I wanted to dig into a little more narrative of what's happened over the last five years. Of course, as everyone is interested over the last eighteen months to two years, what has happened here with development? So. I want to pick out some highlights of the, the five-year comparison and that's in attachment two there. So, yeah, some of, some of the highlights here, the number of commercial development permits has been trending up since twenty nineteen. So we've, we've looked at the number of permits and also the total value of those permits. So the number of permits has gone up. Although in the same time, the total commercial construction values have decreased. Just a little bit, not a lot. And I'm encouraged by the number of permits. That means that there is still activity going on and still improvement happening. Residential development permits have been trending slightly down over the last five years. While residential project values were trending up just until twenty twenty-one, so kind of the opposite situation there. We are going to look into this a little further. My initial thought is this might indicate an increase in multi-unit residential types, because those are typically more valuable. But would be just a single permit for multiple units. So. I can hopefully bring more detail back to you on that in the future. The number of building permits for all development types has remained relatively steady through the last five years. And then particularly as we look at the last two years, construction activity itself has remained fairly strong through twenty twenty, particularly. Permit numbers again have remained relatively strong in twenty twenty-one, just a small decrease. And then it's the construction values that have really dropped in twenty twenty-one. So. This is, you know, relatively same number of permits, but a relatively larger drop in value means. Still the same number of project, projects going on throughout the city, just smaller projects. So those are the highlights and I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Questions. Counselor Nielsen.
Andrew, when I look at this. Year-end development permit totals. Like. Do we follow trends and comparatives? So for example, I'm thinking. If, if you look at our percentage of, of commercial residential, that throughout these four years, five years. Is, is where the permits and permit value tends to be with the exception of twenty eighteen. But if we were to look at neighboring communities, even Pinoka. Beaumont, whatever, Devon, would we see the same kinds of? Trends in terms of percentage of commercial versus residential versus industrial, or would we find it all over the map?
Through the chair, that is a great question and it's something I would like to dig into more. We didn't, yeah, we don't have a comparison at this time, but. It would be helpful, yes.
I guess for me, it would just be interesting to see if certain economic factors in the province or the country. Drive permits, not just in our community, but elsewhere and how we compare in. The impact of those economic conditions provincially and federally. So, yeah, I'd be interested in seeing this explored a little deeper for sure. Thank you.
Certainly. Anything else?
Andrew, notice from twenty, again, same graph, a substantial drop-off in twenty twenty-one. Now, I know you're in charge of issuing the permits and not necessarily knowing. Why there was such a dollar discrepancy and what, any idea what you can attribute that to or? I don't know if administration might be able to help me understand exactly why we're down over fifty percent.
Yeah, again, to the chair, we haven't, we haven't looked into the why yet. And it's something that I would like to devote some time to if we can. And again, to compare. To see if this is also the trend in other municipalities would be really interesting. So it's, yeah, again, I don't have a sense of why. It could just have been the hesitance to start any projects. So it'll be interesting to see what happens throughout the next year, twenty twenty-one. But again, if you would like specific information to come back, I can definitely look into it.
Thank you. Anything further? Andrew, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And. Peace Hills Utility Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we're going to have this as a standing item on, at every council meeting so that we can keep you informed on where we are with this project. So after the last meeting, we did contact the lawyers to begin the paperwork required to start Peace Hills Utilities, Inc. And Graham Capital is still anticipating financial close to be secured by the end of April. At the time when the report was written, we hadn't heard back from the minister's office on whether or not we could see Minister Nixon. However, the deputy mayor did receive and myself did receive an email this morning and the deputy mayor will be responding. To that where the minister's office had agreed to set us up with in administration. And that is the update where we're at right now. We, we also, late Friday, had. Some contracts come in to purchase some of the equipment required to do the treatment, so we are securing that ourselves. To, because it's such a long delivery. So we have signed the papers for those as well. And everything is going as planned. Any questions? I'm here to answer them.
Counselor Nielsen.
So, so when we purchase necessary items. How does that, how do we make that transition to turn all those assets over? Like, I guess as we lead, go into this, we may have more demand for us to upfront costs. Before. The MCC gets established. So do we sell that then or do we just give those assets away? Back to the MCC.
Through the chair to Counselor Nielsen. So we are in receipt of the majority of the grant funding that the province has given. And we would order it through, through that money. And then there is an agreement for all assets to be leased from the MCC to Graham. Capital. So there will be that stuff, anything that we pre-order will be included in that agreement.
Great, thank you.
Anything further? Well, I will then adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.